All right.
Six thirty on the dot.
Close call. Well, I said hello to everyone earlier.
You did say hi?
I did. You just, my voice wasn't.
Your mic was off.
So let me know when you're ready, Kyle.
We're good to go.
Okay. Call to order the regular meeting of the Ria Del City Council. Roll call, please. Here.
Mayor Gardens?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
He turned it in.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here. It's very hard to hear. Is that you, Karen?
Yes.
Very hard to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll speak a little louder. Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
And one more time, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson? Okay, thank you.
I don't see his, I don't see his, oh, he, I, he's there. He's there. I see his name.
Okay, opening miss here. City Manager Noff?
Here. Okay, I'm here.
Okay, good. Thank you. Chief of Police Connor? Finance Director Dillingham?
Here.
Community Development Director Caldwell? Water Roadway Superintendent Jensen?
Here.
Waste Water Superintendent Taylor? And City Clerk Dunham is present. Thank you.
Thank you. Now stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not intended. Requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Do you have any hands raised or emails?
Currently, there are no hands raised.
Thank you.
You have one email, which I'll read now.
Thank you.
Myself and many in the community would like to encourage city leaders to continue with the focus of the revitalization of the downtown area, together working with our new code enforcement officer, along with the many property owners on Wildwood, including the current existing multifamily complexes, to improve the business climate that would serve our community as well as attract tourism. The time is now to clarify our vision for this beautiful and unique community. Most that live here value and enjoy our natural surroundings and have hopes that our city leaders will be mindful of this in regards to any and all future developments. Our gateway project should be inviting, welcoming, and is most important for first impressions. The views that surround us should not be compromised with multi-level developments. Consideration of an updated report of our housing element would be helpful in focusing on the need of attracting moderate and higher-type housing developments moving forward in the best interests of serving the needs of our community. Sincerely, Cindy Treadwell.
Thank you. Are there any hands raised during that timeframe?
No, there are still no hands raised at the moment.
Thank you. So we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone from the council who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Is there any member of the public whose hand is raised or who has sent in an email that they would like to remove something from the consent calendar? Hearing none, and hoping you're hearing me. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So moved by Johnson.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second by Woodall.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Gardens?
Yes. Now we shall move on to reports and staff communication. City manager. And that is, I'm sorry, twenty-five in your packets.
Thank you, Mayor Gardens, members of the council. So on March sixteenth, the council is going to receive an update from Humboldt County Public Works related to Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or SGMA for short. This has been kind of an item that's been brewing for quite some time, really, since about 2015 or so, the result of the drought that the state was facing. The Sustainable Groundwater Management Act identified the Eel River Valley groundwater basin as a medium priority basin for monitoring purposes. And so that's really handled from the state level, from the California Department of Water Resources and State Water Research Control Board, but there is a local element to it. And so as part of the stakeholder engagement process that the county is required to go through from the state, the county and its consultant, Jack Rice, will be providing a presentation and progress update to the council and members of the community. So again, that's on March sixteenth. And basically, they'll go over the SGMA. They'll talk about the county's role in developing groundwater sustainability plan for the basin, a timeline for the adoption of that plan in the creation essentially of a county groundwater sustainability agency. And then basically a progress update on those developments. So that'll be coming up on March sixteenth. I also just want to provide a quick update to the council on the gateway sign. As the council may recall, the sign was taken down for maintenance and has been replaced by something I don't think anybody's very satisfied with. We have been in conversations with the artist who created the design for the sign, and she is going to be working with us on finding a new sign maker to basically bring that back to the original condition of the sign. So we are kind of unfortunately starting over with that process, but I don't think it's going to take too much longer, hopefully. And then, and also, you know, the city is watching some of the latest federal stimulus package news. We were on a conference call earlier today with potential funding coming down from the federal government through CDBG that potentially could be used for healthcare service facilities, general welfare service facilities. One facility that does come to mind is potentially the Community Resource Center. It's a potential beneficiary of these funds. But we're going to continue to monitor that and come back to the council as needed to see if we can make some improvements in that regard. With that, I'll go ahead and return it back to Mayor Gardens.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, council, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, questions?
No questions, Mayor Gardens.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilson?
No questions.
Councilmember Carter?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no questions. Are there any hands raised or emails?
Currently, I see no hands raised.
And I see no emails.
Okay, then. We will call that good, and we will move on then to page twenty-nine. Mid-year financial report.
So, thank you, Mayor Gardens, members of the council. Cheryl Dillingham, our finance director is going to provide the update. I do want to thank Cheryl for putting the material together and working on some of the other items that we've tried to get through the past couple of months. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Cheryl.
Good evening. I will say, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, as usual, my internet's kind of going in and out, so I'll make this short. Oh, in fact, it just left. So, the mid-year looks really good. All things considered with the pandemic, I'm very happy to see how things are going. Our expenditures and revenues were almost equal at mid-year. Some highlights that aren't in the report, I think the report speaks for itself fairly well, at least I hope it does. But when I put these budget numbers together, I did not include contingencies. And so, based on the current trends, I'm optimistic that we may not need to use any of those funds that we put in contingencies for the compensation implementation of the compensation study. This is primarily due to vacancies in staff and other savings. You know, we'll revisit this at third quarter, but I am optimistic on that at this point. The most revenues are coming in higher or right at levels. Any changes between this year and last year are mostly due to timing and how the, how the, the timing of the receipt of the money. For example, with streets, the revenues are lower because we hadn't received our TDA funds at mid-year, which we had last year. Cannabis revenues are coming in really good in the general fund. And due to changes in how the state has, is distributing sales tax, they're giving more upfront and doing smaller true-ups, so the sales tax looked really good at mid-year. I still think it's going to be close to budget. I'm not anticipating that it's really going to go over budget, even though it's much higher at mid-year. For the first time, cannabis revenues actually exceeded property tax revenues, and so our top three revenue sources for the general fund are now property tax and lieu, which is vehicle license fees that are swapped out, retail sales tax and cannabis tax. The, I already spoke briefly about the streets funds. They, the state does an update of their projections in January, and they were pretty much on target with what we have in the budget. The sewer and water funds are looking just about right on budget. Slightly lower in expenditures and revenues are pretty close. I will make the comment that the revenues for utilities are posted at the time the bills are issued, not when the money is received, so there's an accounts receivable. And that accounts receivable is sixty-eight thousand dollars higher this year at mid-year than it was last year at mid-year, which represents about three percent of the total revenues from charges for sewer and water. And that had actually been built into the budget, which is part of the reason revenues are looking higher than the budget. But I will also note those funds are actually still due to the city and at some point, and I'll re, sorry, I, this is due to COVID and the pandemic and the inability to shut water off, which is allowing people to get really far behind on their water bills. And those funds are still owed to the city, and we have had some people starting to ask for payment plans. And that, so the budget outlook going into next year, pretty much we have the same items that we had this time last year, which is expenses are increasing faster than revenues, state regulations are taking a toll on the budget for the sewer fund. State-based revenue formulas for streets are never sufficient to give us enough money to take care of our roads, which the general fund has fortunately had funds to pick up and help out taking care of Rio Del's streets. The economic outlook, who knows? This time last year, we were all worried about an upcoming recession, and then the pandemic hit, and I don't even know. I, I'm just like baffled about how things are going. But fortunately, they're going good for Rio Del. And then the, the GAN limit is a calculation that we have to do that makes sure that our revenues don't exceed a growth factor that's somewhat controlled by population and CPI. And Rio Del's getting really close to hitting the limit on that, and that's something that, you know, Kyle and I will be monitoring and talking to the council about. And with that, I'll just turn it over if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Cheryl. I will go to the council now. Councilmember Woodall?
I think it all looks good. I was impressed to see that our cannabis revenues have exceeded property tax. I mean, I'm just glad they're coming in. The last thing you mentioned, Cheryl, did that relate to the GAN limits calculation based on city population may now limit tax revenue? Was that one of the last things you mentioned?
Yes.
Okay, okay, then I understand that. And then I was talking to Kyle earlier, and I had noticed that on the sewer funds, the CPI adjustments, these are last year that they're going to authorize. They're authorized to end this year, but it, I think Kyle mentioned that we'll address that with a rate study in our, in the next year, and then we can look at CPI again. Was that right, Kyle?
That's correct.
Okay, no, that, those are the only two things I, and I think it looks like we're doing good. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, just the one question on the, you say that we're, you list that what's billed is what we, is what we're, you're showing what we've gotten for our water and sewer fund. Are we significantly behind in the people making payments on that? Is that a, is that a big number?
Well, it's sixty-eight thousand, which is three percent of total annual revenues. So to me, three percent isn't a really big number, but to somebody, the few people that owe that money, it's really big numbers on an individual basis. So, I mean, I'm not, and I had built a three percent revenue reduction into the budget because of COVID and other things that were going on. And that SB, was it ninety-eight? It's been so long now. So, so the revenues are okay. It's just something that's out there that I wanted the council to be aware of.
Is, is there a normal force that we're behind in this compared to the three percent of it?
It's three percent, wait, let me, usually, okay, this is somewhat hard to do because I don't have as much information at home as I would in the office. But what I looked at was, oh, actually, I do have that, to put it into context. So, the accounts receivable for utilities last year was two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars, and this year it's three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars, which is sixty-eight thousand dollars more. Now, on a typical, that's about a typical month's receivable, the two-hundred-and-fifty, because most people pay on a monthly basis, and depending on the timing, when you look at, look at the receivable, that's about what it is. So it, it's gone up sixty-eight thousand dollars from last year, and that's due to the inability to shut water off. And it's three percent of total revenues, which is not, not a substantial amount that I'm super worried about it. And hopefully, we don't write it off. Hopefully, we are able to collect that money. In COVID, there may be some upcoming COVID relief that might help those people out, and we will certainly do our best to direct them to those potential sources of revenue or aid to help them pay their bills.
All right, that'll, that'll be good. Thank you.
Does that answer the question?
Well, yes and no. I, I understand that.
You can always come in if.
Well, it's really difficult to get in there by the time everybody went home. It's tough. I don't get off till the three-thirty, and I think you folks go home at three, so. But I, but I guess what I'm, I'm trying to get my head around is we're, we're increasing our, our revenues, but that's due to the fact that, otherwise, we would probably be shutting them off. Is that what I heard you say? We wouldn't be increasing them because we would, we would turn the water off, and then they wouldn't incur a bill, is that?
No. So, for budgetary purposes, we record the revenue when the bills are issued. But for cash flow purposes, we haven't actually received those revenues. And so at some point, those people have to pay those bills, or we're going to have to write them off, or they're going to go on payment plans. And I just wanted to be, the council to be aware that there was about a three percent difference between the revenues that were reported and the cash that we had actually received. But I don't anticipate that we will have to write all of that off.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Carter?
Makes sense to me. No questions now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no questions. Thank you, Cheryl. It looks, looks good. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we are then moving on, because that was a receiving file. So now we move on to the discussion on solid waste franchise agreement and opportunity for universal collection. Page thirty-three in your packets. City manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor Gardens, members of the council. So we do have Lynda Wise with Recology on the, on the line with us today. And so we'll give her an opportunity to answer any questions that the council has, and I'll just kind of run through this statement. We do have some correspondence attached to your agenda packet. That includes an October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen piece of correspondence from the Nuisance Advisory Committee endorsing the concept of universal garbage and recycling collection. The Nuisance Committee also, back in November, issued a letter to the City of Fortuna encouraging them to look at adopting the universal garbage and recycling collection services. So, back in September two thousand nineteen, the Nuisance Advisory Committee was briefed by Recology Eel River on the adoption of universal collection. So just to back up a second, universal collection is essentially mandatory garbage service where households and all commercial businesses would be required to hold a garbage account. Right now, the level of voluntary subscriptions in Rio Del is approximately fifty percent of all residences in commercial properties. So we're seeing more and more of the jurisdictions really moving to universal election mandatory garbage service. Eureka, Arcata, I believe parts of the county, and now Fortuna, or at least looking at it. Certainly not speaking for Fortuna, who's under kind of a different regulatory regime than the City of Rio Del. But universal collection would extend garbage and recycling services to approximately a hundred percent, to approximately all customers' residences and commercial properties in the city. So, in discussing the universal collection with Recology Eel River, in a recent experience implementing this in Eureka and Arcata, the major hurdle posed really by universal collection in Rio Del specifically is cost-related. Meaning that as a jurisdiction, if Rio Del were to do this alone and on its own, the capital initial investment cost would be very high, spread across a very small number of customer base. So, new trucks required, new totes, garbage totes are required, staffing changes. There's just a, a large amount of initial costs associated with moving to universal collection. So the broader subscriber base that you have, the more those initial costs are created, the more it becomes economical for a small community like Rio Del to participate in universal collection. So, I have been in some conversations with the city managers from Ferndale and also Fortuna. Fortuna essentially is renegotiating their contract, and they're looking at the regulatory environment with CalRecycle and some of the regulations coming down from the state. And the idea and the concept, I think, of universal collection services is appealing for a number of reasons, and doing it as a group is appealing because the cost is spread out, and it's the most efficient way of engaging in this change. So it's, I want to be clear, the, the opportunity here, and that's why it's, the agenda item is titled "Opportunity for Universal Collection", is that if Fortuna moves in this direction, it provides an opportunity for Rio Del as well to move in the direction of universal collection. They are a necessary partner in moving in this direction. We cannot do it alone. Would be, you know, Rio Del and Ferndale, if we decided to do it without Fortuna, it would work. But with Fortuna, there are enough of a subscriber base to spread out the initial cost and make it much more feasible for rate payers to engage in this process. So basically, essentially, we have fifty percent of eligible subscribers subscribing to guilt, the garbage and recycling collection. That would be expanded nearly a hundred percent, if not a hundred percent. So back on November eighteenth, the Nuisance Advisory Commission issued that correspondence, which is attached in your packet to Fortuna. And we have heard back from them that, that they're looking into this. And so we want to start kind of moving in this direction, giving the council the opportunity to consider this item. This is just a discussion item for, excuse me, this is just a discussion item for this evening. And we'll be back with a more formal adoption of a calendar of getting to this, of getting to this opportunity on this timeline. It is a fairly tight timeline. We are looking at, you know, potentially adopting, renegotiating the contract or solid waste franchise agreement, which does not expire until twenty-twenty-sixth. We're looking at passing the new ordinance related to universal collection, conducting the study, doing public outreach, all of that before the end of June. So that's a relatively tight timeline. We were just on a call earlier today to, to, you know, get the proposal into something for the council to consider. And I think we're going to And I think we're going to have City Clerk Dunham do a lot of the kind of day-to-day pushing of the process along with the city attorney. But that's, that's for the next city council meeting's consideration, so. So again, Fortuna is, is potentially moving in this direction. It provides us an opportunity to engage in universal collection. It aids the city in the sense that it would help the city to not only meet the state recycling waste diversion mandates, particularly down the road as those mandates unerringly continue to creep down to smaller and smaller communities. It would aid in reducing illegal disposal, nuisance conditions and public health concerns in the community. So, so with that, I'm going to see if there's any additional comment from, from Linda. Linda Wise is the general manager for Recology Eel River. Linda, welcome and, and hopefully I covered a good amount of it, but feel free to.
You did, Kyle. I was prepared to say some of the things that you said. I, I want to say that the, I, I know that this is coming quickly and it really is hinging on some of the things that Fortuna is going to be needing to do in a short period of time. And also one of the things that's an efficiency is that we're going to be able to take advantage of a timeline and having some public forums and workshops that are somewhat in the same area where you are and they're going to be experiencing similar changes. So we really see that as something that's going to be a positive in communicating some of the changes that may be happening. We have been nailing down in the last couple of months, some of the assumptions that everybody wants to come down to with what the services look like. As Kyle mentioned, it would be universal garbage collection. Everybody would have a recycling can. We'd also be offering the voluntary green waste program and still would be every other week for the city of Rialto and Ferndale because it's a, not a, it's not a required system to do weekly yet. And also also offer the bulkly item pickup. So I know that that's something that you guys have been wanting for a long time because it will help with some of the issues with people having difficulties disposing of things. And, you know, I think that there would be better systems in there, better contract and better transparency for, for everyone in bringing up this now. So if you have any questions about, you know, some of the details that we've been working on, I can let you know. Right now, the ballpark is that we're looking at for like a thirty gallon can. What this really looks at is, is, it's about, you know, what most people are on right now. They're going to be getting their own can. They're not going to be supplying their own cans any longer. We'll be having a universal look. And it's going to be around between two dollars and fifty, two seventy-five per person, more per month. So it's not like terrible amount of money. But we can, we're, we're going to be talking about the details and those numbers may move a little bit up and down, but it's not a lot.
So, and just to add a little bit to, you know, to Linda's comments, you know, this is also an opportunity when we do a solid waste franchise agreement. There are some potential changes that we can make and we renegotiated back in two thousand sixteen. And again, our current contract is not expired since twenty twenty-sixth. So we would be essentially renegotiating that early. There are different issues that we can address. One of them being discounts for either low income or, or senior residents. We can address who pays for garbage services ultimately between the renter and the landlord. Whether that ends up on a property tax bill for payment, if somebody's not paying appropriately. There are other issues that, you know, potentially could be wrapped into a new agreement, for example, street sweeping. There are different cleanup events that continue to be sponsored or could be canceled. There would be bulky items and pickup for, you know, mattresses and large size items that they do or three times a year that would be allowed for a customer to call a large items pickup. And then, you know, there could be, you know, the river cleanup, even the river cleanup could be more regularly financed for, you know, a large dumpster. So there's a lot of considerations in terms of items that the council may want to add or subtract. For example, the recycling bins in back of city halls, subtraction. If you had universal pickup, you wouldn't necessarily really need the bins in the back. Or maybe you just need them for the holiday period to help provide some relief to residents to have just a lot of boxes and, and whatnot that they need to, to get rid of. So these are all options that, you know, that we can consider over the next couple of months as we, you know, move forward in the process. But with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and return it back to Mayor Garnes.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you, Linda. Thank you for coming and for explaining and being willing to answer questions. So I'll go, Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, does this, mentioning the regulatory stuff that's coming down from the state, does this have any effect on this, on this thirteen eighty-three issues? Is this going to help alleviate that?
I can answer that if you want, Kyle. The one other thing, there's only thirteen eighty-three is, relates to collection, curbside collection partly. And so this is going to address that further down the road. Because of the size of Rialto, your city manager will be applying for, once it becomes available, a variance. But it's only going to be, it's going to be only available for a number of years. So I think it's five years. It's, I think Jill mentioned that it was two, but it'd be five years. And it does call for having a universal collection at the curbside with a three or two can system. And it does call for a specific color code of the cans. And so this is going to, this is going to cover that.
When we, we talk about the, the cans, because we couldn't afford it as a, a city by ourselves, is, is this, where's the cost to the city? Doesn't the, the hauler or, or Recology pick up the money from the revenue for the people that are buying the service to pay for the, the cans or the bins?
Yeah, but think about it, it's like with your trucks. You're, you're, you're putting out an enormous amount of capital outlay in the beginning of the front. So we're kind of like paying off a loan for the ten years. So we're spreading over the cost of the ten year system to pay for those cans.
But is that going to the city or is that going, who, I understand the cost, the outlay of the cost, but who's?
It's baked into the rates. It's baked into the rates.
So that, but the rates still don't really increase much more than three to four dollars?
I think that the number that we came up today, which was a ballpark, was two dollars and sixty-one cents, around that.
Because, because at HWMA, it seemed like they were talking about a forty percent increase, so I didn't, I know that that was.
So one of the, one of the differences, if I could just jump in, one of the differences is that Rialto subscriber base right now is fifty percent. So it would be essentially doubling the number of subscribers. So that's, that's an element of what's calculated into the rate. I have had an opportunity to look at some of the proposed rates. Rialto's increase is relatively low, I think in large part due to that. And I, you know, for example, the, the need on Rialto's and for a new garbage truck is really only point eight of a truck. But across the region, it would be something like four, I believe, Linda, if that's correct. So all those costs are, are, are spread out and, you know, we're only covering all the city if we needed a truck.
Did you, did you receive that item from HWMA about the thirteen eighty-three presentation that we, that we showed last Thursday?
Yeah, I, yeah, I received some information on that. So with thirteen eighty-three, again, the city can apply for a waiver. It's actually every two years, the city can apply for the waiver extended every few years. It isn't necessarily automatically ended at the end of five, but obviously conditions change regulatorily. And eventually, we will have to comply fully with thirteen eighty-three and the, and the organic. But for Rialto, for Ferndale, for Blue Lake and for Trinidad, because of the population and tonnage numbers, those cities are going to be allowed, including Rialto, are going to be allowed to, to do waivers.
But, but that's just putting it off for, till later, isn't it?
Correct.
And, and I, I know this is new to everybody. It was, it was, it's still new to the HWMA board members. And, and, and there was comment made in the meeting that, that this kind of snuck up on us and we haven't been really brought to our attention. But there's a lot of regulation involved in this thirteen eighty-three, which is reduction of organic waste in the landfills. I, I think it would be good if we could get that presentation circulated to the council so they can watch the, it's, I think it's a PowerPoint or a, it's a link to a, to some kind of a presentation. Because from everything they're telling us at HWMA, that this is, this is actually a big thing for your community, even if we're putting it off in a, for a period of time. The regulation part of it, as the end result, is going to affect, it's going to affect our staff and our people's ability to comply with it. And I'm, and I'm concerned for that matter, we're already short-staffed. We don't have the manpower. The people power, I guess would be the right word, but to understand how this is going to affect us.
Yeah, I, so staff completely agrees. One of the things, well, we're not necessarily immediately subject to thirteen eighty-three. You know, just from my observations, those regulations, eventually they trickle down to smaller communities like Rialto. This is an opportunity kind of to, to take care of it early and either, you know, put the infrastructure in place. And then when we're required to do the organics recycling, like mandatory organics, then, then we can do that, I think, a little bit more easily. For Fortuna, they may be in a position where they're, they're kind of obligated under the law to do that. So it'll be easier to tie into Fortuna's system. Yeah, I would also just add that, you know, Rialto is not exempt from AB eighteen twenty-six, which is also related to organics recycling or, or commercial recycling or recycling of organics. So that still remains an requirement that's on the city. And in fact, they used to have the, the minimum amount of subscription service was four cubic yards. And then just a couple of months ago, the city lowered that to just two cubic yards. So it's spanning the number of businesses impacted by that, by that legislation because they didn't need a statewide, from Southern California to the Oregon border, they didn't need a statewide criteria. So they ratcheted down all, on all commercial organic recyclers throughout the state. So that's just kind of the trend that we see is, is, you know, this mission and this movement towards zero waste that it, you know, eventually gets backed up by regulatory enforcement. And I think moving to universal is definitely puts us, I think, in a very good position to be able to adjust to those regulatory changes. Right now, I think we're pretty vulnerable with the voluntary subscription rate of only fifty percent. Some of the other communities that have voluntary subscription are in the eighty or ninety percent voluntary subscription. So it's, it's very low. We've always kind of teetered on the eligibility and diversion requirements. And this would certainly help us in that regard.
Well, I, I agree with the universal collection concept because you're going to get the bins and you're going to get, everybody is going to be forced to comply via, and do something to get rid of, rid of the garbage rather than us just mounting up and somebody taking it, whatever they, they do with that. But the part that I, I guess I'm, I'm belaboring and I'll probably bring it up again in the council reports is that this, this thing about garbage is not going to go away and it's not going to get any less. We're, garbage is going to become a bigger and bigger issue. And, and how that's dealt with will be a bigger issue as well. So I'm going to, I'm just kind of leaving it for that right now. And I, it's like I say, I support universal collection because, as Kyle said, it's going to get some of these totes and the subscription rate up so that we can deal with this bigger issue of how all this garbage is dealt with. And it, and it looks from everything we've been told, the state is passing this back to the local jurisdictions. The state's bailing out of it and they're, they're, they're forcing it on them. The sma- and the smaller cities are the ones that are going to have a harder time with it. So that's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor Garnes. Kyle, just to be clear, so if, if Fortuna jumps on board with this by the end of June and we do not, we've kind of missed the boat, right? Like, we're not going to get another chance.
I wouldn't necessarily put it that way, that we wouldn't have another chance. I would say the most economical time to do it is, is now. Down the road, we might be able to do it, but I think the cost is going to be higher. Again, because they're, you know, calculating in these rates. Our need is for, you know, point eight of a truck versus, you know, you know, so it, the, the more, the quicker we get on board with this and participate, the easier it is on Fortuna ratepayers, the easier it is on Rialto ratepayers. I think that's the opportunity. But it certainly doesn't go away if we do not participate.
Okay.
It just becomes more expensive.
It just gets harder to do. Okay, thank you. That was just what I wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garnes. Linda, if you're still here, I, I got a question regarding the recycle bins that are placed behind city hall. And you guys pick them up very faithfully once a week, put out new ones. And my observations are that the cardboard is nearly all cardboard in the, in the two big tubs that are there. As opposed to the big monster dumpster that it looks like lots of garbage gets put in that. Do, do you have any percentages or, you know, that, that you spread out on the floor and gone through or your crews have?
Yes. It, at times is as high as forty-five percent contaminated. And, you know, when that happens, that of course, if it's happening on a regular basis, it gets in contact with all the good stuff and the good work that people have been putting into separating things and to faithfully bring it there to, to recycle it. We do characterizations and I can make those available to all of you with your curbside material as well. So, yeah, and, and so we do monitor that.
To me, it looks like we're going to have some very exciting discussions in the next two or three months. And I'm, I'm looking forward to it. It, it should be fun. It should be over the top challenging for our council because it, it doesn't affect a minority, but it affects everybody in our community. And there's going to be a lot of soul searching, I'm sure, by our council members. Thank, thank you very much, Mayor Garnes.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. Councilmember Woodall?
Yes, I have a few questions. Once we do the public workshops, ordinance drafting and adoption franchise agreements, and they have to by the end of June twenty twenty-one, I was listening to a lady when I was listening to the HWMA. and they have to by the end of June twenty twenty-one, I was listening to a lady when I was listening to the HWMA meeting today. And she said at that point, it would must be eighteen months before they could order, it would be eighteen months before we could get a truck. Was, is that right?
That's, it could take up to eighteen months before we could get equipment. Um, it does, that's the reason why we need to go through this quickly with the city of Fortuna um so that they can get um some progress shown to the state that they're working toward that thirteen eighty-three. Um, it does take about eighteen months. Everyone in the state is looking to buy um a garbage truck. They're about four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you can't buy them used anymore because of the Air Resources Board regulations. So they're um, they're not easy to come by and that, you know, we don't, there isn't, you have to buy them that are kind of customized to your area. So we'd be finding them that had shorter wheelbases so that we can get into alleyways and, and areas that are tight.
Okay. Well, that, at least, that would give us lots of time for public outreach and education. I know we need to do it before the ordinance too, but I mean, we need to do it all along to get people ready for it. And I was um watching the meeting on HWMA today and I was kind of surprised by the SB thirteen eighty-three two. I'm glad to hear that we can get variances for a while, but like Kyle mentioned, we need, and, and Frank, we need to start working toward it. I mean, we can't look at, say, oh, we're going to take a variance for two years and then just start looking at it at the last moment. I was overwhelmed with all they had to say, and I just think it would be to our advantage to really sit on top of that. And my other thing was that I love the fact that when Kyle was telling us that there was lots of extra options that we could look at when we're making our contracts. And I think there, there is a lot of things that look at, and I loved a lot of his recommendations. Excuse me. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall. Um, I just wonder, I guess with the public outreach, uh, we will talk about, um, for example, what happens if someone cannot pay for it? What if, what if that sixty-five dollars is one bill too many? How does that work? And how does, how do, is there a fine structure? Or is that something that we will get into at a later?
Normally with universal collection programs, there's um, there, we do, I, I'll tell you with the areas up in Eureka and our Cada, we do everything we can to keep from having to go here. But um there's a lien process and it's usually the property owner that's responsible for paying it in the end. But we do a lot of communication with the, the customers, the tenants. Um, it, it just depends on how you're going to have it structured in your ordinance, how, how to handle that. But we do everything we can. And, and I'll tell you, as long as we have communication from the customers, and I'm sure it's this way with your ratepayers, as long as we have communications, if somebody was paying us five dollars a month, we're not going to send them to a lien process. As long as somebody's trying. So that's, that's usually what we've, we've kept open for people, communication. So if you can't make it, let us know.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you so much, Linda. Um, so um, are there any um hands raised out there? Any emails?
Currently, there are no hands raised.
And I'm assuming no emails are there either. So thank you so very much, Linda, for coming and explaining it uh to us, and we look forward to working with you and getting this done as quickly as, as we, we can, I, I imagine. So um, I think that is also a receiving file. So if there are no further questions or discussion, we will move on to ordinances.
If I, if I may, Mayor Garns?
Yes.
Uh, we'll be back on March second at the next council meeting uh for a formal uh vote uh on a, on a calendar, on a proposed calendar for, for the adoption.
All right. Thank you. City manager. Okay, then. Um, here we are at ordinances. Page thirty-seven in your packet, we are approving resolution number fourteen eighty-one dash twenty twenty-one. Designation of sub-recipient agents, agent hazardous mitigation grant program and pre-disaster mitigation program. City manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Garns. Uh, we're council. We do have Rebecca Crowe on the line of the D H D. We did meet with the council a couple of meetings ago to discuss the hazard mitigation grant opportunity. And uh the council directed staff to proceed and to return with an update. Uh, and so we do have an update, but we also have some action items for the council in order to move this process forward. Uh, and that's contained in the, uh, in the resolution. So uh with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Rebecca. Rebecca, you have a a PowerPoint?
Yes, I do, Kyle, and I think I can share screen. This is always a little nerve-wracking. I share my presentation.
Looks like it's working.
It's my pleasure. Uh, just be aware, I'm at my home. You may see a couple of people walk in and out and we're fostering a puppy, so.
And Rebecca just hit F five on your keyboard.
F five, you say? Yeah, I, it's, I want to share my full screen here. Let me try one more time. Let's see, stop sharing. And then let me try sharing again, just so. Let's uh, let's share screen two. And then I'm going to say, I'm beginning.
It said double click.
Did it, where did it say double click?
I think he was, the double click on the slide. Or on the
Yes, it's, I, I, I have two screens. I apologize for that. I have two screens and it's great on one screen, but of course, it's not on the other. So I might just, you know what, we might just cheat and just go for it. How was that luck?
Perfect.
Excellent. All right, perfect. Um, so yeah, thank you for having me uh back at the council uh meeting tonight. I did want to give an update more on the water system project. Also, just as a um side note, because I know Gordon's here, we do have sewer flow monitoring equipment out in the manholes. So we um are catching the storms that are coming by. So we should have some good sewer data um coming up here. So it's from the other side of utilities. But today I wanted to talk about the water system projects that we're moving forward, our overall funding approach, and then specifically an update on the hazard mitigation um program. So um as the council may be aware, uh, the city obtained funding through the State Water Resources Control Board, drinking water, state revolving fund. And that work has resulted in three projects, all of which have gone through preliminary design um and gone through the SEQA process, which makes it uh very well positioned to be shovel-ready. So the first is the distribution system upgrade project. And that's really to replace high priority water distribution system lines and valves. And we worked really closely with Randy and Kyle to determine those lines. The next component was to, uh, is to install fire hydrants or minimum hydrant spacing wasn't being met. So that project's really focused on the distribution system. The next project is the Eel River Crossing Pipeline retrofit, and that's to install a new horizontal directionally drilled pipeline underneath the Eel River. And the last component is the Douglas Tank Seismic Retrofit Project. So that's uh to replace the leaking redwood tank with a new bolted steel tank similar to the new tank that was installed in two thousand and five. And then, let's see, we've got just a couple uh pictures to show. So this is the distribution system upgrade project. Um, here, these uh, these lines highlighted in yellow are some of the priority lines. And again, we've worked closely with Randy in the development of this project. Here's the Eel River Crossing Pipeline Retrofit Project. We've got a couple options that we're looking at right now. So we're asking for funding to do the final evaluation. We've got an alignment here that essentially pretty much allows us to stay within city um and county right-of-way and avoids the Caltrans right-of-way, but is a little bit longer. All those have been involved in our environmental evaluation and we're working closely with the city as that project moves forward. And then the last is um replacing the Douglas Tank. Pretty straightforward. So funding approach for the distribution system upgrade project, we're moving forward with the State Water Resources Control Board. They funded the planning grant. Um, so we are looking to put together a package that fits within their funding guidelines. Uh, another potential is the North Coast Resource Partnership Proposition One funds. They should be having a solicitation the end of summer or fall. Um, and then also future opportunities, like Kyle mentioned, with COVID uh potential relief bills and dollars. The city's project is positioned really well in that we've got um for the distribution uh project, almost a hundred, hundred percent design plans complete and all this SEQA complete. And then other uh big project funding source that we're going after is the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Funding. We talked about that at the last meeting, but we're really targeting that for the Eel River Crossing uh Pipeline Retrofit Project and the Douglas Tank Seismic Retrofit Project. And then just uh a summary of where those projects are presented. And we're working on finalizing the cost estimate. So for the Eel River Crossing, we're estimating approximately three million to three point five million. That requires a maximum city match of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, we did a preliminary benefit cost analysis. And again, this is looking at things from sort of worst-case scenario, you know, hazard avoidance. And we look at it as avoided costs. Um, if we replace the pipeline now, prior to the next big earthquake event. So you know, if the pipeline were to go out, we're looking at avoiding a loss of water service to metropolitan business. Um, we're looking at um the loss of access to the backup water source. Um, we're also looking at potential draining of the water system with failure of that Eel River pipeline and aging couplings of the connection to the water system. Again, this is really worst-case scenario, because we're asking um the federal government for money to help mitigate these losses. Um, so we're definitely again portraying everything in the worst case, but as you can imagine, if those couplings fail, you know, no matter, everything's in there and it should work fine, but you could potentially drain the system, which would cause loss of water service to the entire community, could potentially cause loss of fire service. Um, so when you're looking at all those things combined and compared to the cost of the project over time, we're getting a preliminary benefit cost ratio of greater than one. And in fact, we're working on it this afternoon. We're looking at just above three. And if we're able to get above three, that improves the ranking, that gets us some bonus points. So this project's looking really good. Um, and then the second project is the Douglas Tank Number One Seismic Retrofit Project. Again, the preliminary cost estimate is about two point five to three million, maximum city match of about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. Again, similar, similar avoided costs, loss of uh, we're avoiding loss of water service and associated wastewater service. Um, we're avoiding potential damage to the Douglas Tank Two. So those, those tanks are right next to each other. So you can imagine if the uh redwood tank goes down, it could cause damage to um the Douglas Tank next to it. And then um we're avoiding the loss of fire service and a potential uh structure damage. In the ninety-two earthquake, there was documented damage from fires in both Petrolia and Scotia, and that, and we can use that information to um carry over estimates of fire damage, making um the city's application stronger. That's a summary of where I'm, where we're at right now with the projects. I think I'll go back to the summary page and then see if there's any questions.
All right. Thank you, Rebecca. All right, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor Garns. Um, no, you know, I got no questions right now. Rebecca, thank you so much for coming back and for giving us this lovely update. I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
Mayor, thank you. Um, Amanda, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Garns, and thank you, Rebecca, for coming back to Riedel. Is there kind of a, a baseline for a benefit cost ratio that uh, you know, projects are going to be all go and below that, no go?
You have to get a one. If you don't get a one, you can't.
Yeah, that's, that's obvious, but.
Yeah, a three gives you bonus points. If you get above a three, you get bonus points. Um, each disaster is going to have its own little bonus points. Um, we're able to address wildfire with this, so I think that helps us get, get bonus points. Um, does, does that answer your question?
Yes. Um, when do you expect to have a final benefit cost ratio?
For the, for the Eel River, we're pretty close at three. For the tank, you know, by the end of the week, we should have our, our final number pretty solid. And I think we'll, we'll probably be able to get a similar number. I think we're looking at even worse law, potential losses um with the Douglas Tank Number One. Um, especially we're, again, we're putting everything in worst case, and we have to make it reasonable and logical. So it is logical to believe that if the Douglas One tank were to come down, it would damage and potentially take out Douglas Tank Number Two. So essentially, that's seventy-five percent of the city's water source. Again, from a worst-case hazard perspective, we can essentially say all that water can go out to the community. It's going to take a long time to, you know, rebuild and get those tanks back into service. So you've got a number of down days. So, you know, I'm feeling good about that, about that project as well. And I think by the end of the week, we should have pretty close to final numbers for both those DCAs.
And uh, the submittal of the applications is next month sometime?
They're due March fifth. They're submitted electronically via CD. We've got our admin staff ready and on top of making CDs. Our plan is to have the final application by March third. We're well underway. I know that draft environmental is pretty much complete. I know both the scripts of work are underway. So we're making good progress.
Good. Thank, thank you very much, Rebecca and Mayor Garns.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Councilmember Woodall?
Um, no questions, but hi Rebecca. It's been a long.
I'm, I miss seeing you guys in person.
Thank you, Julie. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, on the, for the uh cost, is this, it said it's done part through our water rates. Is this something we've already been, we've kind of been charging the rates and we've been putting it aside for this type of situation?
Yeah, so back uh, our last water rate adjustment process on the water fund, uh, funds were set aside in the capital portion of that fund, which I believe we started out somewhere around two a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. Um, at, in this current year budget, we're projected at the end of the year in the capital fund at around nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, so this is precisely why we, you know, are uh setting aside capital funds, that we have them to provide the city's match. Um, how exactly we finance the match is, is another question, whether it's, you know, paid out directly or whether we uh take a loan uh to pay it off over time is another question, but uh, but we do have the funds available to meet uh most of the match reform.
So that's, that's primarily my question is that we're, we're not have to do increase our water rate to do it. We've already increased it and we've just been putting it aside. That's.
Correct. So we have, yeah, we have the funds available to uh, to meet most, most of the gap. And any remainder, you know, in theory can be financed over time, so there wouldn't have to be uh any increases associated.
So that's that, that's all that is. Is there, is there some other background? Somebody having their mic going, just bringing in some uh background noise from the conversation, or is that just my speaker?
And I think it, there is a little bit over Mayor Garns's line, but um.
I'm in a room by myself. But I'll turn off my mic.
All right, that's all I have for, thank you.
Okay, um, and I think I have no questions. So are there any hands raised or emails?
Currently I see no hands raised.
And no public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. And so we are looking then for, thank you Rebecca. We are looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 1481-2021. Is there a motion?
I shall move, Woodall.
We have a motion by Councilmember Woodall. Is there a second?
Second by Johnson.
A second by Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. Roll call please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garns?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Now we will move on to the introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number 383-2021, approving the pre-zoning of the city's wastewater disposal parcel and intervening Caltrans property to public facility in anticipation of annexing the area into the city and approving Resolution Number 1475-2021, pre-designating the city's wastewater disposal parcel APN 205-111-039 and intervening Caltrans property to a general plan land use designation of public facility in anticipation of annexing the area into the city and approving Resolution Number 1479-2021, authorizing the filing of an annexation application to the Humboldt County Laughco to annex the city's wastewater disposal parcel APN 205-111-039 and intervening Caltrans property into the city. These will all be incorporated into one vote at the end of the, the discussion. So I will now turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garns, members of the council. Hopefully after Mayor Garns said all that, that we have Mr. Caldwell on the line.
Yes, I am here, Mayor Garns, members of the council. The introduction pretty much spells all out actually. The project before you is actually in anticipation, the annexation of the city's wastewater disposal field. I am getting feedback on my end. Can everybody hear me all right?
Getting a lot of feedback on mine also.
Yeah, you're, you're kind of scratchy, Kevin.
I apologize. I'm not exactly sure why. But again, I will, I will try to make this short. The ordinance and the two resolutions are basically what's needed in order to make application to Laughco to annex the city's wastewater disposal field and the intervening Caltrans properties. We sent out a referral to Caltrans and then to local jurisdictions that have a financial interest in the annexation, basically tax revenue. And there was no objection to the proposal. So what staff is recommending is that we actually introduce for the first reading ordinance number 383-2021, we should pre-zone that property to public facilities. Resolution 1475-21 would basically pre-designate a general plan land use designation of public facilities, which is consistent with the zoning designation. And then Resolution 1479-2021 would authorize the city staff to make application to Laughco to initiate the annexation process. Right now, this property was, was developed, I believe, in 2013 as the city wastewater disposal field. Maybe it was 2014, sometime around then. And currently, up against, it's not within the city limits. The city is obligated to pay property taxes. Once this property is annexed into the city, we would no longer be obligated to pay property taxes. So over the life of the project, the life of the wastewater disposal field, that would be a significant savings to the city. As such, I would recommend that we approve the first reading of ordinance number 383-2021, approve Resolution 1475-2021 and 1479-2021, pre-designating those lands to public facility. I think the project is pretty self-explanatory. If there are any questions of the council, I would be more than happy to answer them. Hello?
Hello?
Deborah is muted.
You're muted, Deborah.
I, I know, I'm on to it. I'm on, I was trying to avoid feedback. Anyway, thank you, Community Director Caldwell. And now we'll ask questions of the council. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garns. Thank you, Kevin, for a good report. As we all know, I was a member of Laughco for, for four years. And one of the items that I put into our list of things that we should be working on this year was, was this project. 100% behind it. And it's time that we got that into our city and didn't have to pay taxes to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall.
Yeah. Do you think Laughco will have any problem with it? I mean, can you see any reason that would hold it up?
No, there has been, there has been no, no concerns expressed by Laughco staff. They did recommend that we annex those intervening properties owned by Caltrans to avoid basically what's determined are called a island annexation. Other than that, they have been very supportive and are actually encouraged enough to make application as soon as we get a chance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, we've been expecting this annotation for some time and I'm, I'm, I'm behind it. Glad to see it come about and thank you, Kevin, for pushing this forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor Garns, and also thank you, Kevin. Makes perfect sense to me. I'm on board. Let's do it.
All right. I think everybody's on to this one. So that's good. Are there any hands raised or emails?
Currently not seeing any hands raised.
No emails received.
Thank you. So then I will ask for a motion to accept or adopt the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 383-2021, Resolution Number 1475-2021 and Resolution Number 479-2021, all regarding parcel number APN 205-111-039 and the intervening Caltrans property into the city. Is there a motion?
So moved by Johnson.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second by Carter.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garns?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. And that brings us to council reports and communications. I will start with Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garns. As we all know, there's been some slide activity that's closed last chance grade in Delmar County for the last four or five days. And just a normal result of winter weather, lots of rain. And we can anticipate that as a normal winter thing until a bypass is constructed. Thursday, I will be attending HCOG meeting and there's an interesting item on it. City of Eureka, HCOG and Caltrans has performed a study, actually by JHD Engineering, to explore alternates for Broadway, Highway 101 in Eureka from Fourth Street down to vicinity of Kmart. And the recommended alternative is what's called a double couplet. That is, there'll be a northerly couplet that comes off of Fourth Street and goes out through, through the marsh. And then links up with Costner and lots of environmental concerns regarding that. But the other couplet will be further south down in the vicinity of Bay Shore Mall. But these, something needs to be done in Eureka or they're going to get to the point that as a traffic engineer would say, we've got a level of service E, which is just a parking lot on, on 101. I don't, I don't know how the coastal zone is going to respond to any requests by Eureka, but they need to move forward as expeditiously as they can. And something that's got the timeline of a last chance grade that takes 30 years to make it happen. I don't see that really working in Eureka. I, I see just too much parking lot activity on the highway. So that, that's going to be an interesting thing and, and it's going to be interesting to watch how the city and Coastal Commission and all the other regulatory agencies respond and move that forward. But I should have a report later on. Second thing I wanted to bring up is that plan to be gone the next two meetings out of town for pretty much the month of March. And so I will miss the March HCOG meeting, the third Thursday. And if the city clerk could give Councilmember Woodall the packet, I would appreciate that. But I will try to attend, maybe 10% try the regular council meetings during my absence. So that's, that's the extent of my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. Councilmember Carter?
Um, yeah, I don't have as much to report this week. I'm kind of boring. Um, we did have the meeting of an ad hoc committee to deal with some of the garbage can issues and stuff around here. So we've had two meetings of that. And it's been really productive and we're just trying to nail down what we're going to do about city garbage cans. And then I have red egg next week and I'll say we have a nuisance committee meeting tomorrow afternoon at 3:00 PM also. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Woodall.
Okay, I had an Humboldt Transit meeting. And as I mentioned last time about the agenda, we talked about bus stops in Eureka and we're going to be looking at that. And also they have a new route that goes to Samoa from Eureka. And so far it's not meeting its Fairbox, Fairbox requirement. So we're going to have to look at that and try to promote that route and to get people from Samoa to use it in order that we can continue it. Then last week, I believe, I rode around with our community service officer. It was very eye-opening. I must have rode with her for four hours. She seems very knowledgeable. Excellent communication skills with the, with our citizens, that the houses where we did stop at. I was very impressed with her. I'm excited that she's on board with us and that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, yes, we, as I mentioned earlier, we, we had an HWMA meeting last week and the executive director Duffy sent out a link to, I think, all the city managers and to board members about this 1383 organic waste reduction. And I appreciate Julie going to the meeting and listening, sitting through that presentation that they did. I'd like to request that somehow that gets sent to the council. And it would probably be, it'd probably be not as long as it was for Julie, but to look at the link. But it'll give you an overview of what, what's being, what this bill's about. And it's, it's, it's not something that's coming, it's something that's, that's here. And I just think we need to be aware of it because it has been under promoted by several agencies for whatever reason. But I think it's worth the read to be aware of it because it's going to affect us in different ways.
Can I ask Frank a couple questions?
Yes, good.
Frank, CalRecycle said that there was a video that, that we, that you might like to watch and she was going to send a link. Did you get that link?
I think that, I think that's what, I, I just saw the thing, the thing today, but I think that's what's in the link that was sent to Kyle.
Okay. And, and the other question was, I know that we have a variance for it, but were they talking about the smaller areas, the, was it you that brought up being able to form JPAs? So we didn't have to do it as one jurisdiction, that maybe we could form a JPA or work with the counties on some of the SB 1383 regulations that were coming down?
It was, it was, it was not me that brought that up. I don't, not sure who did, but that can be done. And there's a way to relegate the, the work to be done by either one, it could be done by HWMA or it could be, I know the city of Eureka is pretty involved in it. So if you worked off of what the bigger agencies have done, it may help the smaller ones because our stuff is more, it's just a lot of bureaucratic stuff about, you know, one is, is taking food that's left over from a restaurant and giving it to people that are hungry. And it's, it's all kinds of things to, it's, it seems to be a, a lot of bureaucrat paperwork, staff work, which we don't have, we don't have that staff.
The one other thing is I had some presentation by Humboldt Borough Waste for the Arcata City Council. And it was really interesting and I think they could have give us some answers on some of these things that we might want to be looking at. Do you think it might be valuable to have the presentation that they gave to the Arcata?
I didn't see what they did to Arcata. Arcata has been pretty proactive on this. I know they've had some public meetings and they're, they're, they've been, they're the one city that's probably pursued this. Although Eureka is pretty busy with it too, but Arcata and Eureka are the two that have been pretty active because I think it affects them more than, because they're so big. Anything that they put together as a presentation would probably be, it could be an advantage to the city.
Well, I thought, yeah, it, it was an interesting presentation. I, I thought it was worthwhile. But maybe I'll see if she can give me a PowerPoint and you can take a look if it would be worth.
Yes, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Frank.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I have nothing really to report. I have, except I have a meeting on March 10th. The mayor of Eureka, Susan Seaman, asked me to join the city of Eureka's Countywide Traffic Safety Task Force. And so that's going to be about 25 people getting together and trying to sort out safety issues. We all know that Eureka has a lot more issues probably than, than most of the other cities. But we also know that we all drive through Eureka. So she's looking for the countywide input. So I will be joining that meeting on March 10th. Other than that, I have nothing else. So if any, no one else has anything, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved by Johnson.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Meeting adjourned until, let's see, our next regular meeting on Tuesday, March 2. Let's see, our next regular meeting on Tuesday, March second at six thirty. Good night, everybody, and thank you.